Good evening.
Good evening. It's 5:30 PM on Wednesday, February 7, 2024, and this regular meeting at the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall, 1123 Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Mayor Jeremy Grimm, presiding, also President, our Council President, Jason Welker, Councilors Deb Rule, Joe Espiro, Justin Dick, Kyle Schreiber, and Pam Duquette. Councilman Schreiber is showing us remotely. Under the city's adopted Code of Ethics and Civility, as the Presiding Officer, I have to identify law enforcement personnel in the room who will be serving as Sergeant of Arms for this evening's meeting. Tonight, we have Police Chief Corey Kuhn. Thanks for being here, Corey. If everyone will please rise, we will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
That I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, are there any announcements from council?
Mr. Mayor, I've got a couple of announcements. First of all, I want to thank everybody in the community. We had our 16th Annual Heart Ball at the Bonner County Fairgrounds. I don't think I'm spilling the beans too much when I tell you we gross somewhere around $400,000 for our hometown hospital, Bonner General Health. The numbers will start to come in, but I want to thank everybody that helped out, all of our volunteers, all of our patrons, everybody that came in and put their time and their resources to it. It was a beautiful event, and we are blessed to live in a community like this. Secondly, I want to address some comments here on the mayor's going away party. There's been some stuff in on social media and letters to the editor, so I'd like to clear that up as much as I could. Right around January 1st, January 2nd, I was notified that the mayor would like to have a farewell party. I was called to ask to be able that we could do that at 113 Main. I asked the city representative if that was okay with legal. They said that was cleared with legal because of the short notice and the size of our town. Obviously, we all have businesses here, and sometimes we're going to run into it, and the city's going to have to use our resources. I've mentioned this a couple of times before in the restaurant industry. Most of our restaurants in downtown Sandpoint, we make money during the tourist season. That's typically June 15 through Labor Day or September 15, and during Christmas break, and that was Christmas break on January 3rd. I have my email that I sent off to Cassidy. This out Cassidy, this is how short notice it was. This was at 110 on January 2nd with the details of the party. We had to hold over half of the restaurant to block off, to make room for this party to happen at 7 o'clock. We had to take limited reservations, and we had to turn away walk-ins during Christmas break. It wasn't the greatest financial thing for us to do as well, too. But I thought I was doing the right thing by honoring our, I believe is our only second two-term mayor that we had as well, too. It was a wonderful night. We didn't get out of there until after city council was over. I don't think we arrived until about 8:45 or so. There was great camaraderie. It was great to get some last thank yous and some send offs to them and some of the outgoing electeds and the city staff that were there. I did not know that it was going to cause such a hubbubaloo around town as well. I have presented the mayor a check for the full amount in the refund of doing that to make sure that we don't have any appearances of improprieties or ethics as well, too. So please accept my apologies with that. That was never anything that we were supposed to do, or I didn't want it to look like an ethical breach, or that we are doing anything that we might be setting precedence for here later as well, too. So I thank you for your time and your patience with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dick. And I'll just say, for the public's benefit, really appreciate that gesture. I'm not sure it's your responsibility, but I'll let the public know. We will be posting all the bills by line going forward throughout my administration, and I will be ensuring that we're only spending public dollars on essential public infrastructure and work. So thank you so much, Councilman Dick. Any other council members have?
I do. I just wanted to say that, I'm sorry, can I go? Last week, I walked down to the beach, and I ran into two more amazing city staff, Todd at the park and rec, and it led into Jack Wright, I believe is the name is, who's an SRO. So Todd and I started talking about goose poop and solutions, what issues and how we could address it. And then he got on to dog poop, and then that led to the discussion of the SRO. And sure enough, he pulls up, and it's like, okay, so I got a chance to meet the two of them. I just want to say kudos to them because it's a thankless job, especially the dog issues. And I just wanted to remind citizens to be responsible, dog owners. I know it's hard, but right now with the snow melting, it's pretty nasty out there. And that's a thankless job that the SRO has to do, and I just wanted to thank them.
Thank you, Councilwoman Duquette. Any other announcements from council? I have just a couple announcements. First, Bonner County Airport Manager Dave Shuck reached out this week, and they're looking for someone from the city of Sandpoint to join the airport advisory board, so I will be bringing an appointment at some point in the near future. Thrilled to be collaborating with the county and building those relationships. In terms of staffing at City Hall, we have put out a position for a Public Works Director and a Planning Community Development Director. We've received a number of very good applicants, and we're doing this without a headhunter, saving thousands of dollars, doing it as an in-house advertisement. So looking forward to proceeding down that path and interviewing those candidates and hopefully filling some of those positions that have been empty for a long time. Parks, just a wonderful observation about our community. Got a call early or late last week from one of the user groups who are trying to get out on the field. They have lacrosse games and other games coming up. And, you know, the parks staff, Austin and staff, were able to, within about a day and a half, get out there and sweep all the debris off the field at Memorial Field. And although we can't open the bathrooms and some other facilities right now, as of yesterday, those fields are available for reservation for the user groups, so our young people and other active people can get out there and get a jumpstart to the season. Something of everyone's concern and attention is something called the Short Term Rental Bill. That bill had a RS introductory hearing today before the House Business Committee down in Boise. Tomorrow, the draft bill will likely have an actual House bill number. The proposed legislation severely limits our ability to manage short-term rentals at the local level, and as proposed, we prohibit treating short-term rentals any differently than a residential dwelling for the purposes of inspection, licensing, or any related controls that Sandpoint presently has in place through our ordinance 1353 and 1380. This will be considered by the House Business Committee shortly, so I encourage everyone to please contact Representative Sage Dixon, who sits on that committee, to express your concern. If approved as drafted, this bill would potentially open up every residence in Sandpoint and their neighboring property to become a year-round party house, in my opinion. So please do your research and reach out to our representative if you can. Next, Councilman Dick, I wanted to recognize you for your service to the Bonner General Health Foundation. I was at that heart ball this weekend, and the foundation's support for our medical needs of our community is simply magnificent. So thank you for your service. I know you just resigned or finished up your term as president, so thank you so much. Two more quick things. Working to schedule a council training session for new council members and a good review for old council members. We'll also go over the strategic priorities, and we're trying to do that sometime after February 21st. And finally, for the public, next Tuesday at 6:00 PM here, the city council will meet with the Planning Commission, and we'll go over comments and any changes needed to the comprehensive draft, planned draft, and prepare it for a public hearing so we can adopt it and start working on all the elements that will precipitate from it. So next Tuesday at 6:00, if you want to be here, we will be taking public comment throughout the review process of that. So next on our agenda is the public forum portion of the meeting, which allows the public to address the council and myself regarding items listed items listed on the consent calendar or on any other topic not included on the agenda. If anyone in council chambers wishes to speak now during the public forum or during any other portion of the meeting, you must complete a comment, sign up for them, and hand it to staff. If you're on Zoom and wish to speak during the general public forum, please raise your hand on Zoom at this time. To accommodate those who wish to speak on general items during public forums, as well as those who wish to speak on specific business items on our agenda, a total of 20 minutes will be dedicated to the public forum at the beginning of the meeting. If you'd like to speak and did not have an opportunity to do so, we will provide that opportunity by reopening the public forum at the end of our regular meeting. I would like to make everyone aware that the city does have a policy on public meeting decorum. The rules are posted here in the chambers at the entrance door. In summary, I would ask that those participating in our meetings this evening, please be pleasant, respectful, and not make derogatory statements about others, including city staff, not be boisterous or disruptive, no calling out, clapping, and other disruptive behaviors. Please note that the council cannot take testimony on any planning-related matters outside of official public hearing. Public comments need to be kept to comments only, and please no questions or debate. You're always welcome to contact me during regular business hours here at City Hall if you have questions that you need answered. During the public forum and also during other public comment opportunities during the meeting, each speaker will have up to three minutes. When it's your turn, please introduce yourself, state whether you reside in city limits, and we'll go from there. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak during the public forum?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, one moment. Janine Shepherd.
Good evening, Shepherd.
Janine Shepherd, Bonner County. Mayor, council members, just wanted to come and pray for you guys tonight, and just pray a blessing over our meeting. If you'd love, I'd love it if you'd join me. Dear Lord, we thank you for this beautiful place we call home. We thank you for all the ways that you bless us daily. We see your hand of protection on us, and we want to pause and praise you. You are a good Father. We ask for godly counsel and wisdom for the mayor and council members. We pray that you and your kingdom of righteousness be manifested in the hearts of all those who are in authority in our city. We ask for your blessing and insight on them as they plan for the coming year. Lord, we publicly repent for the things that we have done and the things that we have not done. Forgive us, Father, for not giving you our full attention and for taking you out of the places you belong. We pray now that the blood of Jesus would wash us clean. Bring the nation to the foot of the cross to be forgiven and turn our nation's heart towards you, holy Father, that we may put you first and obey your commandments. In Second Chronicles, it says, "If my people, who are called by my name, will humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven, and I will forgive their sins and heal their land. Now my eyes will be open and my ears attentive to the prayer made in this place. For now I have chosen and sanctified this house, that my name may be there forever, and my eyes and my heart will be there perpetually. We stand firm today to push back the darkness that is fighting to cover our land. It may seem like we are living in dark times, but we have hope, hope in Jesus, because your light always wins. At our lowest point, you are our hope, and at our weakest points, you are our strength. We submit our lives and our country to you, Lord. We pray for revival to sweep across our nation, and that we will remember this time, not only for its challenges, but that the nation fell at your feet. We praise you for your goodness and thank you for your mercy. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen."
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd.
Mr. Mayor, I believe we have someone on Zoom who wants to speak. One moment. Carrie Logan.
Hello, Ms. Logan. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Carrie Logan, and I am a city resident. I am commenting on 6B. I am appalled at the expenditure of $800-plus on the city dime for private dinner of former city officials and employees and guests held at Mr. Dick's Restaurant on January 3rd after the swearing-in of new officials. Last year, I paid the city about $750 in property taxes. To my way of thinking, I paid for this dinner, and I highly object to my tax dollars being spent in that manner. Historically, celebrations of outgoing officials were held prior to the council meeting, and council chambers are in the lobby. The public was invited, and cookies or cake were provided. I am beyond incredulous that anyone would consider this an appropriate expenditure. Ethics considerations aside, but considering your fiduciary responsibility, the right thing to do is to refuse to pay the bill. Attendees should pay their own ways and settle with Mr. Dick. And I added this after hearing Justin's comments tonight. Thank you, Mr. Dick, for doing the right thing.
Thank you, Ms. Logan.
Mr. Mayor, no one else has indicated speak during public forum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I erred in my order of the agenda. I, at this time, I'd also like to bring staff up for quick staff reports as we started last council meeting. Look in the back. Chief Kuhn, I'll just go from left to right. Do you have any updates or anything to report? Okay, thank you. Who do we have next? Maybe Lance or Adam? Just want to give a quick update. These are very, very capable, frankly, amazing watchdogs of the city's infrastructure, digital infrastructure.
All right, Mr. Mayor, councilors, thanks for having us here tonight. Again, just an introduction. Lance, administrative lead for the city's IT department.
I'm Adam, primary technical lead for the city IT department. So our goals for February, we did have the RFP for the SCADA system closed. So we are going to be hopefully moving forward on getting a SCADA integrator chosen out of that. Asking for the water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant, lift stations. We are actively working on hardening our SCADA network as well. That's being planned for this month and next month. We're moving forward with that even before we get the new SCADA system integrated. As we talked the other day about getting our Microsoft 365 stuff backed up, we are actively moving forward with getting equipment ordered so we can get our cloud infrastructure backed up. Server backups are another thing we are reevaluating right now. We're looking at some alternative vendors so we can have more effective backups and restore times. And then we're looking at failover internet for the city, so in case our current ISP goes down, we can continue to work and function.
Thank you.
One of the other items you'll find on the agenda, I believe it's item eight, is going to be moving to the BSN A Cloud. Mayor Jeremy Grimm will be discussing that at a later time. But it's also going to provide greater efficiency for public requests and increased security for the entire city staff, which I believe Jeremy will go into. Some of the other improvements we're doing are for GIS improvements, implementing the new utility management platform, which is going to provide a huge array of utility benefits to our city shop guys, water treatment, wastewater treatment, and just the general utility structure, and also digitizing that and syncing it for them. We're also working on a data sharing agreement initiative with Bonner County, so we can start sharing some of that data with them specifically related to GIS, potentially getting some aerial photos and then addressing setup for us, so we can kind of piggyback off of their current GIS and get some more up-to-date information for the citizens of Sandpoint when they're trying to apply for permits and stuff. We're also working towards a huge array, about 21 different workstations being deployed at PD and Fire this month, and we are just about at the end of our AT&amp;T FirstNet migration, getting the entire city critical infrastructure over to AT&amp;T FirstNet, which will ensure that at any point in time during a catastrophe or a major outage of not just a cellular network but power and everything else, that we have contingency measures in place to make sure that our police force, our fire department, and then also our critical infrastructure, which is our streets and public works teams, will be able to communicate across the AT&amp;T FirstNet bands.
Cool. And just for clarification, so if there were a major outage, there's some special power that AT&amp;T has that my city phone might work, but my personal phone might not? Is that right?
Correct. So through the AT&amp;T FirstNet bands, we'll have priority access to all the AT&amp;T towers over five different bands that they have available. That'll only be available to first responders in critical infrastructure. We also have the ability to deploy inter, I mean, to deploy temporary towers that they will ship up to us and drive up to us, that we can basically stand up and act as cellular towers in an event that all the cellular towers in the area drop. And so that's something that's also part of our contract with AT&amp;T.
Any questions for Lance and Adam in the council? Thanks for doing what you guys do.
Perfect. Thanks. Thank you.
Working through, I see Holly up here. Holly, you want to give a quick update on anything interesting or?
I don't have much, but I have good news that TAP grant for the Boyer Sidewalk, the federal grant, we received that. It was good news that we got earlier this week. We also started survey, so one of the good, one of the few benefits of not having snow is we were able to start survey on our water main replacement project and our road pavement reconstruction project. And the last update I have for you is on the Pine and Fifth Signal project. We'll be scheduling a public open house here in the next couple of weeks, so stay tuned. You'll get a time, place, and date and invite to that.
Thanks, Holly. Any questions for Holly?
Good to have that public meeting.
Cheryl, you want to give us a quick? Again, Cheryl, Hughes does all of our grant procurement and contracts, and make sure that people are doing what they say they're going to do when we have a grant and working through the challenges when there are challenges.
That's right. Good evening. So over the last couple of weeks, and what I'm working for towards in the near future with the next couple of weeks, is we just closed out the National Endowment of the Arts ARP grant, where we were given $150,000 that supported eight community art organizations. So that grant has been officially closed out. We submitted our fiscal year '25 grant application for the state emphasis patrols for police. That will come out late summer. We'll probably get an answer on whether we get that grant or not. I also met with the Department of Commerce regarding fiber grant funding opportunities, and there is a potential grant that will be coming forward with applications due about fall, and that will be geared towards local governments for planning. So that could help us update our business plan for fiber, as well as conduct an inventory, which would be very beneficial. We had generator training, so staff in fire and facilities now know how to operate and troubleshoot our new generator. And I also worked with Devin at the wastewater treatment plant to get a heater replaced that failed in the extreme cold, so that got replaced. Let's see. Working on getting the 10-year extension permit for the sand redistribution at City Beach. I'm working with IDL and the Army Corps for that. I'm working with IDL to update the encroachment permits needed at City Beach, the swim areas, some docks, as well as the launch ramp there. And we just released the herbicide-free aquatic invasive species RFP that will close on February 20th. So that contract will come forward probably March 20th for consideration. And let's see, finally, the timber sale so far has we've sold about $50,000 worth of timber to the logging companies, the lumbermen. And so far, it's been going well. The weather has held up for that, except now it's getting a little muddy, so now it's hard for the trucks, so they're having a little issue now with the way the weather's been. They liked the cold weather better, so that's my update.
Cheryl, any questions for Cheryl?
Quick question for Cheryl. You want to go first, Pam?
And council members, talking to Legal and Melissa, our clerk, I'm gonna, when you, when you speak, it just, it helps for the record if I then say your name, so if we ever had to transcribe something, they'll know whose voice is speaking. So ultimately, we're.
Thank you. So if I recall, the expected revenue from that timber sale was around $380,000. So are we still on track to gross that from that project?
Yeah, there's, there's no, there's no belief that we're not going to get what they're anticipating. They got more done this winter than they thought they were going to get done, but the weather kind of helped that. But now the weather's not so helpful, so it's going to slow them down a little bit, but they're still, I mean, they're still on track. There's, there's no worry that they're not going to be able to harvest what they expected. And the end date is still around October, so it's all going well.
Good. Thank you. Councilwoman Duquette?
Yes, on that, Mo said he would invite us up there. Has anybody been invited to go? I'd like to go see what's going on. Anyway, that's probably not your, but it just popped in my head. The herbicide-free, what is the, what's our option?
Though the herbicide-free, that's not a new program at all. It is done every year. Our last contract was a three-year contract with Aquatic Weed Solutions. And they, they.
The manual.
Foil and.
Manual pulling?
Pretty much, yes. So it's chemical-free. They don't use chemicals.
And so last year, I know there was an issue with herbicides being used. I didn't follow it close enough, just heard complaints. That wasn't the city.
That wasn't the city.
I think it was in Dover.
Yeah, that wasn't the city. We do the herbicide-free, and we contract with this company, and it's a three-season contract, so it'll start this year, go into next year and the year after, but that contract will come forward once the proposals are received. But yeah, it wasn't us that used the herbicide, but I know.
Cheryl, ballpark, how much, I won't hold you to the number, roughly how much is that contractor here?
Roughly, it runs about $40,000 a year. That does not account for any inflation that might have occurred since our last contract, so could be higher. But we're probably looking at, you know, at least $120,000 probably for the three years. Yes, not per year. For the three years. And then part of that is where he will, not he, the company, will come in and give a report on what they harvested that season. So this year, I don't believe they came in last year. This year, I plan on holding them to coming in and giving council that report that they're supposed to be giving, so.
Thanks, Cheryl. Any other questions for Cheryl? Appreciate it. Christine, anything? No? Who's next? Maeve's going to be talking to us. Do you want to update us, Maeve, or?
Hello. A couple of updates this week. We've got pretty far along on the playground design for Traverse Park. We've been cranking on that. The majority of my time's been focused on the Traverse value engineering and validation process, which you're going to hear about in a little bit here. And then we had a really great meeting with the Forest Service and with the Ponderay Peddlers. And because the peddlers won't be able to do a certain project on the Forest Service land, the city will actually benefit from that this summer, and we're going to be able to extend the mileage of work being done out there on the city parcel instead. So that's just an example of our collaboration and a result of our recreation master plan that we completed. And it's such a great document because now we can pivot if we need to, and we can support our user groups. And I'm meeting with Nordic, Sandpoint Nordic Club later this week to find out some more about what they're interested in the watershed. So lots of things in the air, but you'll hear more about Traverse in a minute.
Thanks, Maeve. Any questions for Maeve, not related to Traverse?
I'll wait until she, it's not a question.
Thanks, Maeve.
Thank you.
Amy, want to give, Amy's our city planner?
Good evening. A few updates. One, I wanted to update council on a staffing change. Our associate planner, Sarah Gilmore, has accepted a position out of state, so it's a great loss for us, but it's a great opportunity for her. And in the past week, we have received three subdivision applications, two for residential. One is the area that's been asked a lot about, south of Ontario, which is called the Turnstone Subdivision. That will be coming forward, and then north of Boyer Avenue. And then north of Boyer Avenue, um, south of the Boyer Farms. Um, and north of Woodland Avenue, um, will be another small residential subdivision. Um, and then we have a condominium plat for the big toy condos. And we're also processing the subdivision uh, for the uh, Bonner County Fairgrounds. That was a condition of approval of the rezone. Um, and that's creating the uh, creating the lots and then dedicating Samuelson Avenue so that that can then get developed. Uh, so spring has sprung and the developers are getting ready.
And A- Amy also um, related to last night, there's a impact fee advisory committee meeting and um, the city will be putting out a request for proposals for consultants to uh, tune up our impact fees and update those. So Amy and the team all got together last night and had some fun. Uh, questions for Amy?
Please.
Yeah, Councilwoman Duquette.
It, maybe this isn't um, something for you to share, but what are the big toy condos? I've never been able to figure out what that is on the corner.
Um, they are condominiumized big garages essentially.
Okay, this is the one out by Schweitzer.
Yep, that's Schweitzer North Boyer Road.
Yeah, no, I've seen. It's the other one. The one on Boyer.
The new uh, smart storage unit.
Oh, Baldi, Baldi.
Baldi and Boyer.
Looks, yeah, it looks like you can't get in.
Like um, climate controlled storage units.
Okay, thanks. Thanks.
Any other questions for Amy? Thanks so much, Amy.
Thank you.
Brandon, do you? Awesome. This, this is our civil engineer.
Uh, I just have one thing uh, on the private development side. The Culvers Crossing subdivision has completed all their public infrastructure. It's been accepted, so um, not totally there yet. We're still working out the bonding, but um, they've done all the required public improvements and they're rocking and rolling on, installing how, building houses.
And that's on the northwest corner of uh, Boyer and
Mountain View.
Mountain View, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Ebbway.
Ebb.
Ebbway and Boys.
Any other questions? I'll also note that um, Brandon and myself and some others met this week to talk about our stormwater problem throughout town. We don't currently have a stormwater utility uh, or stormwater impact fee. So just trying to start to figure out how we could start to put together a financial uh, method to address our stormwater deficiencies and expansion of those systems in town. So hopefully we can uh, come up with a good plan and bring it back to you soon. Thanks, Brandon. Uh, Rod?
Hi, guys. Yeah, also Mr. Mayor. So I'm the utility supervisor for the city of Sandpoint. Been here about twenty seven years, a little over. We have a staff of eight people down there. We've got three guys on water distribution and three guys on sewer collection. A meter reading guy that runs around and reads the meters and works on those and a guy that does all the locating for us. So we also help plow snow during the winter. There's um, about four or five of us that do that. Our projects right now that we're working on is DEQs requiring all cities with services to do a lead copper survey. So we are going through all our logbooks and doing an inventory and we have to have that done by October of this year. So we have about five thousand accounts that we serve. From commercial and residential. So that's our big project uh, that we're working on. The other projects that we're working on with is trying to track down INI in our system. So the collection guys are out checking manholes and TVN sewer lines this time of year, since we don't have that much snow. We have a process where on our manholes, when we see water coming into the manholes, we can drill through it. We can stick oakum and we've got a epoxy, a Vontae grout that we could soak it and we stick it that talking gun through to the outside of the manhole. And that water react, or that grout reacts with the water and creates a seal on the outside of the manhole. So nice. Those are the two big things that we're working on this time of year.
Thanks, Rod. And, and that uh, copper lead is associated with the Flint, Michigan and
It's from Flint, Michigan. Every city's doing it. Um, Cordeleen, it started about a year ago with their supervisors. So I imagine they're about wrapping up. I mean, it's even down to the people that have thirty accounts. They've got to fill out the permit. Um, we had a template that they provided Lance and Adam helped modify it. They're able to bring all our addressing and accounts and incorporate them in there. So we're able to go through and it's a plug and play. Okay. We have galvanized on our side of the line or from the main to the meter and galvanized going towards the house or poly pipe. So talking with the old timers around here, and I've been here twenty seven years, we haven't, I've never seen any lead on our service lines whatsoever. So.
Good. And that's a federal mandate or federal requirement?
Key requirement that we have to have done by
They're not, they're not funding us to, to pay, they're not paying us for us to do this? So unfunded mandate?
Yep.
Okay.
So luckily we have really good logbooks that from all the years that we've been installing meters and we know what we have out there. But it's paper copy and we've got to go through the paper and look at our G I S, enter that information.
Wow. Yeah, well, that sounds like a lot of work, but uh,
It's a good time to do it this year, this time of year.
Thanks. Any questions for Rod?
Thank you.
Thanks, Rod. Appreciate it. Think that, did I miss anyone? Speak now or forever. One piece. All right. Um, all right, let's move on. Um, that will conclude the public forum portion and the staff and other reports. We'll now proceed with the consent calendar. For the record, total amount of bills is one million, five hundred and eighty nine thousand, six hundred and seventy four thousand, twenty cents reflecting five hundred and ninety seven thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and thirty six cents for regular payables and nine hundred and ninety two thousand four hundred and sixty two dollars and ninety cents for payroll. Does council have any questions? Are there any items council wishes removed from the consent count?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Rule.
Um, yes, um, I guess Sarah answers these questions. Would that be?
Um, yes, if there's uh, is there an uh, an item you'd like to remove or?
I think I just have questions about two to clarify. I think they'll be pretty simple.
Okay.
I'm hoping. So on the first page, there's what I understand W W T P, that's wastewater treatment plant. And there was an HVAC diagnostic, but the, the person we're paying is Fifth Avenue Detail Shop, and I thought they detailed cars. So I'm really confused if this is a mistake or not.
I would need to look into that.
Okay.
Obviously, don't. I would, I need to pull it up and look and see.
Okay.
It would, I would appreciate having that before, so I can actually research.
Okay, okay. All right. So um, I was just, it didn't seem to make logical sense to me, those two things, and it might be perfectly fine. Um, and then there was another thing with the um, on page um, eight. Um, I think it's on page eight. No. Sorry, I must have written the wrong page. Now, it was the city legal description from Glahy with our um, building rental at the wastewater treatment plant, and it looks like we're paying for the land is the way it's described on the sheet. And I'm like, we own the land, so why are we? It is.
I would need to look at that as well.
Okay, all right.
When it comes to the bills, really it's their department that's approving that stuff. And if I have a question, I could then go back.
Okay, I will um,
Do that before.
I will take that as a note and make sure I bring these to you before the meeting. Um, actually, that was on page twenty two is where I found it. Um, that's, those were the only questions. So I'll check in with you before I sign off on these and just make sure those are all, make sense to me. Okay. Sorry for the confusion.
Councilwoman Rule, would you mind, uh, would you have then the amounts of those two uh, bills that you had questions?
Um, the Fifth Avenue Detail was a hundred and eighty dollars. The um, I don't know if I wrote down all of them. Page eight.
I have it in front of me, Deb, if that helps.
Um, I wrote down page eight, but that's not the correct page for that question I had. So my mistake there. Oh, no, it's page nine is what it was on. So when I was scrolling through the computer, it looked different. Um, the not that.
Want me to jump in, Deb?
Sure, absolutely. Jump in.
Paid Glahian Associates nine thousand eight hundred and seventy five dollars for city legal description and boundary survey project.
That's correct, yeah. Yeah, so that's, we did a full survey of the city. Uh, with a plat. So they surveyed every square inch of our boundary and
Okay, and we didn't previously have that?
Um, that was initiated under the previous administration. Um, I'm not fully up to speed as to what the impetus of it was, so.
It was confusing to me as to, I would think we would have that somewhere in our records as to what the city boundaries were. We've been here a hundred years.
Yep, it does change when anytime's annexation, but um, I, it's a good question and um, I'll have more uh, detail on bills from this point forward because this is the last slug of bills that were initiated or um, under the former administration. So um, I will be pleased to provide any information going forward on that, so.
Okay, and then the other one I found, sorry, the rental of the building that's on page twenty two. And that looks like it's sixty nine hundred dollars and change.
Oh.
And that one is um, wastewater treatment service rental of land and building. Like, I understand we're renting potentially the modular, but
Correct.
we're not renting the land.
Correct.
We own the land, so that was very confusing and didn't make sense to me in the beginning. So if we can correct that in the future, so it I don't think we're paying ourselves for land.
No, it is for the modular buildings and um, as I'm learning, sometimes the uh, entry, the description of the entry um, uh, is less than, less than
Clear.
Yes, so.
Yes, I know what you're looking at. That's actually a geo number description. So there's multiple things that go into sometimes into the geo description. So that doesn't mean that that was land and building. That's just the geo description. The number of it, so.
Okay, okay. It just comes across as confusing because I don't know all the details that you know. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
GL is general ledger.
General ledger number, that's a basically a helping number that we give it and we can't give everything a separate number else we'd have a million. So we sometimes lump things together. So that's like a rental of land and building. Anything that we rent this land or building goes into that, that account.
Oh, that makes sense. Okay, that clarifies that. Okay, thank you. Very efficient, Sarah. Thank you.
I'd love to thank her.
Oh, thank you, Sarah.
I, Sarah, I wanted to thank you because um, I came to you with that whole big pages and pages and you were very kind and patient to try to walk me through the finances and the budget, and I've appreciated your time.
Any other questions or items to remove the consent calendar? I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Councilman Dick, second by Councilman Spiro. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes and the consent calendar is approved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, moving on, item number seven, old unfinished business, seven A Northern Lights Electric Franchise Ordinance fourteen fourteen. Uh, during the council's December twentieth, two thousand twenty three meeting, staff provided presentation on the proposed Northern Lights electric franchise agreement following the first reading of the ordinance by title only and approved of approval of the summary, which was published by in the Bonner County Daily Bee, the city's newspaper official, official record on January third, two thousand twenty four. Pursuant to Idaho Code section fifty three twenty nine. Now that thirty days has passed and since introduction of the ordinance and publication has taken place, council may consider approval of the ordinance granting the following is reflected in the title of the ordinance, which I'll now ask the clerk to please recite.
Mr. Mayor, the title of ordinance fourteen fourteen states as follows. An ordinance granting Northern Lights Incorporated its successors and assigns the non-exclusive right, privilege, authority and franchise to locate, construct, install, own, maintain, repair, replace, extend, operate and use facilities in, upon, over, under, along and across the franchise area for the purposes of the transmission, control, sale and distribution of electricity within the city.
Does the council have any questions or wish to discuss further? There are members of the public who wish to comment on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
With no changes to the ordinance as initially read and published, I would entertain a motion that the rules requiring three separate readings once in the ordinance entirely be suspended and that ordinance fourteen fourteen passed its second and third reading under suspension of the rules.
So moved.
Started. This will be a roll call vote moved by
Welker.
Welker, second by Dick.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes and ordinance fourteen fourteen is approved under suspension of the rules.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, moving along, next item is seven B. Uh, for the final item under old business, I'm pleased to report that the work session on the Selkirk Joint Powers Agreement that the city council and I held with Westside Fire District and Saco Fire District and the Firefighters Union, which was requested by council during the January seventeenth meeting, was held on January thirty first. I want to report as well that I have received a letter from the president of the Firefighters Union stating that the union agrees to postpone the collective bargaining agreement negotiations until May first. Included in the meeting packet is a proposed amendment to the joint powers agreement that would extend the current expiration date from April thirtieth to June thirtieth in order to allow the joint po, joint powers uh, agreement parties to continue to review the J P A. Does the council have any questions um, or wish to discuss the proposed amendment? It's before us. This is basically to give us a little more time to consider and work through uh, the joint powers agreement. Are there any members of the public who'd like to comment on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. One moment. Troy Bado.
Bado.
Troy Bado, Selkirk firefighter and city of Sandpoint resident. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the council and the mayor for the workshop of, on the J P A. Uh, Selkirk firefighters are in support of extending the J P A uh, agreement and hopefully have a few more workshops with the district on this topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Troy.
Got Heistercamp?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors.
Good evening.
My name is Scott Heistercamp. I am a commissioner for Westside Fire. And I'm asking that the council vote to extend the J P A for Selkirk Fire and Rescue through the end of June twenty twenty four. The meeting that we had last week, the work group, very positive uh, resulted in an understanding, I think a better understanding of the many, the many positive benefits of the joint powers agreement for Selkirk Fire and Rescue. Uh, and it did bring to light a small concern that I think uh, these continued meetings will help us resolve and ultimately make the organization much more efficient and more effective. Thank you.
Mr. Heister.
Mr. Mayor, that is all who have indicated an interest to speak on this topic.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Does council wish to make a motion on the resolution proposed to amend the J P A to extend its expiration date to June thirtieth?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Dick, second by Councilwoman Duquette. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, onto new business. For the first item under new business, council what's that? Oh.
Sixes? The sixes? The top of the, didn't we miss the bills and?
No, we're on eight now. New business.
Yeah, what about this?
That was on the consent calendar.
Really?
Um, under new business, for the first item under new business, council will consider a change order and an amendment to the city's agreement with Gino Construction for Traverse Park renovation phase one. As reflected on the agenda, this change order and amendment would provide for completion of the James E. Russell Sports Center to include court surfacing, HVAC, landscaping and other features. Uh, I will now yield the floor to Maeve, our Parks and Planning Development Manager.
Thank you. I'm going to ask my team to join me so you can put a face to all of this. They didn't get warned in advance.
Welcome.
Great.
Looking good.
No mud on the boots, come on, thank you.
Um, with me, so we have Gail Stanley, she is with ALSC Architects and they're our prime on the design team, have a couple consultants underneath them, and then we have our general team, we have Chris, is it Pierre?
Ferrera.
Ferrera, sorry, we have the day, you know, Yant and Corey Kwan, and you wanna tell me your roles, so.
I'm the CEO of General Construction and I'm the executive oversight for the project.
Excellent.
The project superintendent on site there. You'll see me there. Project manager.
Yeah, so I wanted you all to see the team because there's been a lot of questions about who's doing what and how does this all work? And what is this contract? And so I have the slide here to show you and I'd blow it up bigger, but that's it right there, so this is a CMGC contract and you, I've talked about this in the past, but I thought to create a diagram and put some faces with it so you can understand how intimately we work. We matched our clothes today to our outfit of the choice here, dark, dark tops. But no, we work quite closely, we're on the phone almost throughout the whole day, almost every day, and especially at times like this where we're in negotiations for a second round of big contracts. And so this just generally reminds you of how the contract works, so with this format, there's essentially three types of construction contracts processes out there or three main ones, and the typical one that we're all familiar with is the, the design bid build, and that's where you have the owner, in this case that would be me as the owner's rep or the city, and then you would have a design team and they would typically go off, come up with a design and then from there, the owner would then hire a contractor separately. And there wouldn't be any coordination between the designer and the contractor unless it happened after the contractor was already hired. In a design build contract, which is what we had previously, you would have the owner and then the owner hires the contractor essentially, and the contractor and the designer all work for that contractor, so you don't have as much access as an owner and you don't have much ability to impact the design. And you really have to rely on your design build contractor to do everything you want, really, so that's what we had before. And with Emmerich, as you may recall, and that was two years ago, so in twenty twenty-two, we started that process and that was where the track that we went down originally and it didn't work for us and we learned a lot of lessons, but we also walked away with our design team, which is ALSC and Mike Terrell Landscape Architects and DCI Engineers, so we had already designed, what about, I'd say our schematics and about the majority of our concept was developed at that point. And we were able to take all the budget from that and negotiate out, so we zeroed out the pot, if you will, and we were back to seven point five million and we closed out that contract and we started over, so when we started over, we didn't want to totally lose everything that we had worked on for the last six to nine months, and so in April of twenty twenty-three, that's when we decided to restructure everything. And we went with the construction manager, general contractor process, and that's where you get this hybrid team and that's what you're looking at right here, that's all of us. And you can see from the diagram, as the owner's rep, you know, we are the top of the food chain, but we also are very collaborative and it goes back and forth all three ways, so Corey and Gail work very closely on the budget. That's their role, they go back and forth on the design, they have their own cost estimating, we have cost estimating, cost estimating on both sides on the design as well as on the construction side, so that way they've been verifying costs from day one, literally, so if Gail specs, for example, and it seems like it's outrageously priced, Corey calls her up and says, hey, I might be able to get a fan of the same quality with all the things you want for a lower price, and they make those decisions in advance of hiring the subcontractors or purchasing the materials. And so that's the advantage of it. Another big advantage of this process is that we are under a timeline. When we signed the contract with the Russell family for the donation, it was a two-year contract for that donation, so in theory, that expires at the end of March, and we will be seeking an extension on that and the Russells are okay with that. But the extension is only for another year, we can't carry this project on much longer. And so we really were from the beginning of April on, we had about a year, year and a half to get this project done when we'd already burned about nine months, so that's another reason why the CMGC process is more efficient because these guys can be out there in the field and they can be doing stuff that they can say like, oh, we could start construction on the foundation right now before winter comes, and so that's why you saw the split schedule. So anyway, I wanted to just verify this with you and stop here for a second and just make sure that you all understand what this contract is all about and how this works. Does anyone have any questions at this point? Okay. Now, so this is a little bit more in depth of the delivery model, so now this, this diagram gets into the process. So you can see it a little bit further, and it, and what I really want to highlight is that circular part where the design and the budgeting are going back and forth. What we did that was unique was we decided by the time we got to, I think it was around June, July, we realized that it would take a lot more time to finish the full building drawing set and we were constrained by time, so we decided to split the contract and focus our bid set number one on the foundation and the building. The reason being, as you recall from COVID and the whiplash from that, all the building materials were backed up over a year, and so what we really wanted to do is to be able to get that building ordered, get the steel ordered, lock in the pricing for the most expensive portion of this project and get them building on the foundation of the building. So we pulled the trigger and that was that bid set number one that you approved, and at the same time that we pulled the trigger, the design team was continuing on, so they're off over here moving forward because they finished up everything on, on that portion, but they were focusing on now bid set number two, which is what's in front of you now, and bid set number two is all the nuts and bolts, it's the HVAC, it's the heating, it's it's what's in the landscaping, it's the utilities, it's what is this countertop going to be? What are we gonna do with the reclaimed wood? So it's those finishes, that's where you really get into the fun design detailing portion of it. So they've been doing all of that, we were really still pushing them hard on the city's end, on my end, and I, and the directive from my leadership, from our previous administration, was to get them done before Christmas and get everything under contract. So they put out bid set number two between Thanksgiving and Christmas, which if you're in the construction world, frankly, that's the worst time to do a bid. Because what happens at Christmas? Everybody goes on vacation and if you're a contractor, your guys and girls are flying the coop, they all wanna leave. They've been busting their butt all year, so trying to get someone to do some good estimating during holiday time when they're burnt out is just about impossible. But they did it, they pulled it off, and you know what? It was under budget, I mean, it was over budget and it was a lot. So that was right at Christmas when we, when we got a new mayor and new, new administration and everything changed. And I called it, I said, we can't move forward, I don't feel good with these prices, we push, 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 what can you all do? And it was brutal. This crew right here, we owe them a huge thanks because from Thanksgiving all the way till right now, they have literally busted their butt, they've worked on their weekends, they've left their families during holidays to do what we asked of them, which was to crunch those numbers and find contractors who will do this work for the budget that we've asked. And that's without, without locking in that seven million that we had said we would do, we just kept pushing on, pushing on, pushing on, and you know what? Now we're there, so now we're on the budget and that's what this sheet is all about here, this is in your packet, your staff report. And it over on the left side column, it talks about the change orders, so we're looking at some issues with change orders. Change orders are derived when there's an unforeseen instance that comes up. I have three of them right there that are just about impossible to predict. Although some community members may say that they knew that there was a woodlot out there, we did do geotack, but we didn't do geotack throughout the entire site, and what happened when we started doing excavation, we realized that the majority of the site was a sawdust area, so it probably was a woodlot, most likely. But luckily we didn't find any rotting cars or any explosives because as you may have heard, there was a plane that blew up there once and there was a lot of other things that we could have found, but the good story is we only found trees and sawdust. So not a big deal, and Isaiah's been cranking through this horrible weather again, all through the holidays and through the rain and the negative twenty degree temperatures to remove and replace all of that excavation, so he's been able to do that and really push on a local contractor too. So I have another message here, the majority of our contractors are local within this area, whether they're from Sandpoint, from Sagel, Isaiah, Isaiah lives right down the road, I mean, you are feeding the community with this project during the off-season, during the winter, so I really want to emphasize that because while it might seem like we are the big bad wolf in the room, we're actually feeding mouths that could really use local work. So I just want to remind you of that, and we're, we're driving a massive project here that has trickle-down economics. These people, if they're not from here, a lot of them are eating at our restaurants, they're going down to Joel's, I know, I hear all about the tacos and hopefully over to Dustin's, and you know, I really want to emphasize that, there is a lot of benefits to this project. It is truly a ripple economic benefit. Okay, so then the next change order that we have is the picnic shelter relocation. We were told we had to do that, that is one of those things that was not in the original scope. And it's fifteen thousand dollars to move it, and the reason being is that when we went to go lift up the, the building, all of the posts have rotted. So they all need to be rebuilt and they need to be structurally rebuilt, and that means they have a concrete foundation and it costs more money. Frankly, we're getting deals out of this stuff, it might not seem like it, but we're really getting a lot out, out of this crew. And then the third one is a standard SWIP, I get a lot of calls from folks who take pictures of things out on the site. This is what the extra money is for, it's for those extra storm water prevention measures that we put in, they're called BMPs, best management practices, we put in things like those little waddles, the straw bale that you see, that's circular, that's called a waddle. They put up the orange fencing around, they put up the black fencing, that's all to prevent, prevent the erosion from going into our drainage and into that area. Particularly along the north side or the west side, sorry, where we have the Chuck Slough. So there's, you know, a little bit of a cost in there, not much when you're talking about the scale and the magnitude of this multimillion dollar project. And then as we move on, you can see the other costs here, we've got general costs, very transparent about that. I don't know about you, but I've been trying to do a renovation at my house and I can't possibly do a renovation for that, and yet we're asking them to build for a nominal amount, and that's this crew right here, these are your people that live in this community and I, I just want to tell you, we're getting, we're getting a good deal and they've gotten beaten up. So then as we move through here, you can see the first contract, which you did approve, was for four point two million or so, and that included the building, that included the steel. The steel just arrived last week, I don't know if you guys saw the trucks, but it's all in, and we're really excited, they're gonna start building here around the beginning of March, so we've lost a little bit of time, but we're, we're cracking and we, hopefully we can make up some time over the next few months. And then change order three, that's coming in at seven, seven million two hundred and eighty-three thousand, so there are other costs that I've shown up there, which that's the design side of things, there are some survey, geotack costs and some random administrative costs that we've included in here, but nothing, nothing scary. And then with all of that, all the change orders and the budget, they're, they're really actually within seven, they're at seven point eight million. They're within four percent of the national inflation index, which if you were to take out, if you were to subtract those change orders, so about what, two hundred and fifty thousand out of that, you, we would really only be at seven hundred, eight, seven million eight hundred and fifty thousand, which, I mean, really, for a project of this magnitude, we are doing great considering that twenty percent is what they anticipated or the expected national inflation index is. So we could dive into all of that, but then the final question is, I've been getting a lot of questions from folks, what did you take out? How did you make this project happen for that? And that's called value engineering. So just to point of reference, the top portion of this graphic is the original scope, this was, I mean, I really scoped it and from November of Thanksgiving of twenty twenty-one until January of twenty twenty-two. This is what we got seven point five million for, this top, these top two things, and you can see most of that is included below and a whole bunch else, so what did we cut? So let me first tell you what's in here, so here's what we're going to get for this project, I mean, for this budget. We didn't anticipate in the original budget that we would have twenty, a twenty-foot wide fire lane, and that was a requirement, but we did not budget for that. And we have funding in there for, or a line item for that to be paved. We're hoping that we can afford that, but right now we're working with our contingency, so of the budget you're seeing right now, that is for it to be gravel, compacted gravel, which is still considered ADA. But as we move forward with this project, as we have contingency available, we intend to pave that. We are relocating and refurbishing the picnic shelter, we're relocating and refurbishing the playground. The landscaping has, the scope of the landscaping has grown from an entry plaza to an entire landscape and stormwater drainage system. And then also the tree scope has tripled from the original plan, so we have vastly increased this. In addition, this is only phase one, but all these other items up here, as you know, the skate park expansion, the new inclusive playground and splash pad, the bike skills course, and then hopefully the renovated outdoor tennis court are all anticipated to be completed this summer, in addition, and that is a ripple effect of doing this project. We're able to then, you know, realize other project benefits, so really by the end of twenty twenty-four, Thanksgiving next year, we're gonna be making up for our lost time this year and celebrating the completion of this whole project. And now, value engineering, this is where I'm gonna have my team speak to that. What did we cut, guys? The big thing, the bathroom? We didn't remove any bathrooms, but we removed a shower, so that's okay, right? Who needs a shower? There was only one.
There's a splash pad right outside.
There's a lake.
Come on, we have a lake, no, there was only one shower in the building, so we really didn't need to keep that in there. We reduced the landscaping by about fifty percent, but we kept all the trees, we kept the bed construction, but we are reducing that and why? Because why do we have to build that right now? I'm gonna have money that's going into the playground and I'm gonna be able to do all the landscaping that you see as soon as I do the playground, which is a completely different project, so we didn't need to force it on this project, and that's money we really needed. However, if anyone knows of any boulder sources, we could more than happily take some free boulders and install those anywhere. And then let's see here, what else did we cut? We've changed some materials out, Corey.
We've self performed, so Isaiah's taken upon himself to self perform some areas to cut some costs down.
Yeah, do you want to explain what that means? I mean, basically, he's gonna do the work.
Yeah, so I mean, we, we had in the bid to door installer, which is typical of what we like to do, but Isaiah has volunteered his time and he's more than capable of installing, you know, all, all the items necessary and that, I think that cut about thirty thousand from the bid, so.
Yeah, and I did want to say with that, Gino, Gino did donate five thousand dollars to the bike skills course, plus all their labor and their time and their machinery, so don't think I won't be asking Pop for some volunteer time when we have to hang some doors. What else did we do, guys? What are, what are some other big things?
I just want to say these guys did a great job in, like Maeve's example of the fan, of coming up with, with ways to do what we were designing with a less expensive route, and so we've been able to work with the design team to ensure that we're comfortable with the level of quality and doing it a different way. So it was a good collaborative effort and it really minimized the amount that had to be fully taken out of the scope. Like we said, it's a shower.
Yeah.
And, and some landscaping.
Yeah, but for the most part, the reason I'm stumbling on this, frankly, is if you look at those drawings, you don't see a big southern overhang. You don't see all that landscaping and we're gonna get all of that, so that's the bigger message. I am stumbling over the value engineering because, yes, we have cut some things, but it is so insignificant and we're talking about material changes that no one would ever notice, and we're still gonna, we're still gonna get this first-class facility, we really are. I've heard some questions recently, Pam, you brought up some good ones about warranty, for those of you that are wondering, everything is warranted. The warranties vary, but the legacy building system has a twenty-five-year warranty. You show me one of those steel buildings that's out at the airport that has a twenty-five-year warranty and I, I will challenge you. We are really doing something that hasn't been done here, this is something to be proud of, and I'm proud of this team. This team has done amazing things, so with that, if you have any questions, you do have a resolution in front of you.
Council members have any questions for the team, and I just want to say, on behalf of the city, thank you so much for all your hard work.
I have a comment if I may.
Uh, Councilwoman Duquette, uh, questions or comments, I guess, yeah.
Thank you. I don't have any questions because I've been bugging Maeve for a while on all my questions. As it was a controversial move. I do want to thank you guys, those I took, I was one that took two pictures of a plugged-up culvert and a selt fence that was down and they got fixed like immediately, and I didn't go out there looking for trouble, I just happened to be out there walking and camera, so I appreciate that. And I, I did want to. And I, I did want to share too with the public, the legacy building solutions, because there has been commenting questions about what the building is made up. So Maeve gave me that today and I looked it up and it, it'll help people understand. So yeah, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thanks for your time again.
Thanks for the questions.
Any other questions from council?
Mr. May.
Uh, councilwoman Rule.
Thank you, Maeve. Thank you, team. You already answered a lot of my questions that I have. I didn't have any super in-depth questions. This is for Maeve. I know it's a huge project and I just wanted to make sure that you had enough support with engineering and building inspection and ADA type compliance things. That was like one of my concerns that we would run you into the ground because you didn't have enough support, but it sounds like these people are supporting you. And because I know you're not an engineer and, and you're kind of in charge of this project. So are you feeling comfortable with that or is there any support we can give you?
No, I mean, just being positive helps. I've been through a lot and I'm not going to hide that. I think the, the experience of the fall was a huge learning lesson and we've all been through a lot. I think one of the biggest things is to acknowledge the team that I have and the staff at the city, because we truly are one united team. I have Christine, you know, our building official and deputy fire marshal. She's actually part of my team. I think she left already, but she comes to every meeting. She's on the phone with these folks, like we are a family. And then on top of that, Brandon, he also has been attending the meetings and, you know, super supportive. And then I'm upstairs now in the far corner and we have a little construction team and that's Eric and Holly and myself. And you, you come up there anytime of the day and we're bantering away and, you know, helping to figure out how to do things. And so that's that team, but then on the other side, look around like this staff. That's only a portion of the staff, but even the administrators, everybody is part of this project. Everybody, whether they're on the front line and they're answering the phone or, you know, it's Kami who's finding out if there's a new user group, if they could use it. And, you know, there's just people all throughout the city, utilities folks, the streets folks, everybody has pride in this and they have been so supportive. And, you know, the streets team, they're going to be putting in the, the water taps and stuff and just, it's just so great. And then the other part of this being a small town project is that almost everyone that I work with has a family member that's either played games or sports at park, at this park, or they're just, they're salivating. They want to, they can't wait to. So it's really starting to take a life of its own and I think we're past the difficult part. I thrive in construction. I have over twenty-five years of experience in landscape architecture, but I was for ten years. I was on an excavation crew. For those of you that don't, don't know, it's where I got my potty mouth from. I was in a ditch frankly, and I built roads and I built utility lines with my hand. I had a pipe wrench that was welded twice as long than the, the men's. And it's, I was a professional skier as well, and that's how I funded a lot of my travel. And I loved it because I was stronger than I could ever be. And I love construction and my, my position here is to keep them in communication. If we go back to that team thing, you saw that. So I'm really the mediator between them, between all of you. And I keep, I just try to keep them going, make sure, you know, we're in motion and we, we meet our deadlines. I feel like a bully, honestly, because we've pushed a lot on them and we've asked them to do things that were never in my scope. You know, three years ago or two years ago, almost two and a half years ago. So that's tough. And if I can continue to search for more money, I, I am doing that. So I guess my ask would be if you know of any sources or if you want to lift a hand out on the site when we start to get to that point or if you know anyone who has some wood to donate, aside from what we've got, we're going to need it. We are, we are looking for some help.
Actually, talk to Kynexu.
I'm going to see them tomorrow.
Yeah. I was just walking out there the other day and had one of the people out there working, look at me and say, hey, do you know anybody who needs some wood? So talk to Kynexu. So my, just some other little things. Because we do this value engineering thing, it sounds like we have the designer talking to the engineers. So we're, we don't have a bunch of some contractors, so we're going to like put plumbing in and then the toilet won't match. Or we're going to put a door, you know, I mean, it sounds like this is a coordinated team. So you're not going to run into those problems when you build your own kind of house where the right hand didn't talk to the left hand and it doesn't fit and it's too late to fix it. So that was one of my concerns, but after meeting the team, I really appreciate you bringing them forward. That makes me feel like this is coordinated. These people are professionals. They're not going to let those little things happen. Because, you know, a lot of people are watching us. And then the other question that I had and Christine, I think did leave, but the ADA, I'm just really hoping that we can figure out how to make sure all those paths are paved, even around the backside of the tennis courts, if that's where we're accessing. That's super important and I know that's super important to you. And then I had another individual from the public. I know way back in the beginning that we had talked about in the bathrooms, having an adult size changing. And I just hope that's not something that's cut because that is incredibly important to our community and to me as a physical therapist. So she's nodding her head. So that question is answered. And then, then my final question would just be that it sounds like this last contract that we're approving, this is turnkey. Like the doorknobs are going to be on and everything else is going to be on. So we won't have to come back and unless, you know, we have an earthquake and something shatters and that would change something, but this is the final piece for.
Okay. I'm going to start at the end and then I'll pull Gail up to talk about. I want to grab you.
Cause I think the public wants that answer.
Explain the guaranteed maximum price and what we just negotiated and, and how we're essentially there.
Yeah. First of all, I'd like to comment, Maeve has done a phenomenal job representing the city. She's been a very good team captain and a lot of coordination has been going on. I will say this, we have not affected the integrity of the project at all. It's still a first class project. And to answer your question, everything will be complete. There's not going to be any missing components, parts or pieces. We have a guaranteed maximum price con, part of the contract. And that means as, as we go through the design and we get the final numbers, general construction is guaranteeing that everything on those plans will be in place and done. The only changes moving forward after this change order signed would be something that is either requested by ownership or if we find some really unique unknown thing. You know, sometimes you just don't know. But that's the whole beauty of this CMGC process. We go through, we work through all these issues upfront before we actually submit the subcontract contracts out. So we have everything included. So your concern is a valid one, but yeah, everything will match and, you know, it'll be, it won't all come from the ugly duck in Spokane.
Sometimes you can find some good stuff there.
Oh, yeah.
And to follow up on the value engineering, it's essentially giving you the same, like a similar product of similar value, but at a cheaper price. So we changed manufacturers in one instance and that changed, that saved like, I think it was like four thousand dollars. So it's just giving you guys what you're asking for, but sometimes of different manufacturers, cheaper.
Just like when you're building your own house.
That's exactly it. And the level of detail that they've gone through vetting the subcontractors proposals is outstanding. Because when you get those contracts, you don't get all the details. So they really have to vet and make sure that all the exclusions are in align with what we asked for or not in alignment. And then make sure up pricing for everything. And, and that's the part where, where Cory, he sometimes wants to just slug me, I'm sure. But we, I pushed, I pushed, I pushed and, you know, I don't know how to get us there, but somehow they did it. And yeah, I do want Gail to, if you can speak to the ADA, we, it is ADA, but.
Yes, yes. We have accessible passive travel. The, the paving of the fire lane is something that actually is still in. It was one of the things we had been talking about, whether it's compacted gravel would be acceptable, but we still have the paving in.
Great.
The contract.
Okay.
Of the fire lane. And then as far as a path of travel from the facility, the new facility over to the existing tennis courts is on the sidewalk, out the front door, on the sidewalk, straight over to the southwest gate. And that would be the same for anybody accessing the two facilities.
Okay. So will you still enter the outdoor tennis courts through the same side between the building and the walkway? Are you going to enter? We're not changing that, are we?
Not changing their gate access.
Okay, okay. All right.
And when we refurbish those courts, they're going to be exactly the same.
Right. But that will be paved between the building. So there's access to do that and all those things.
Correct. The original bid set, we did have an addendum in there. So five hundred pages is a lot to read if you didn't catch it.
Kind of looked through some of it, but drawings and all that, you know, I don't, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know what I'm looking at.
Yeah. Sometimes it's hard to see. There was originally a landscape bed in that area. We've removed that because of the request of maintenance, they want to be able to plow right through there in, in that space between the existing tennis courts and the building. So there's twenty feet between the, the two, the area. And so in the summertime, it'll be a gray area, kind of overflow. You can hang out out there. You know, maybe it's a viewing area, but then in the wintertime, similar to how we manage Memorial Field, we're watching it as we go. And Austin and the maintenance team, you know, they're, they're on board with how we've got it designed and they feel that they can properly manage the snow.
Good. Great.
Uh, councilwoman Rule, just on a related note, you asked what, what else Maeve might need. One of the things I'll be bringing forward in the future is a revision to the grant policy. Council members may be aware that today the process is to bring a grant request to the council. And I think Councilman Schreber experienced this the other week. Because of that, sometimes we only learn of grant opportunities a week before, two weeks before the deadline. Prior to two thousand and fifteen, working with the mayor, staff could pursue a grant without council's approval, at least to apply. And I think going back to that type of policy might give us more nimbleness and make some more opportunities available. But I'll, I'll bring that up, but it's sort of relevant here as we're looking for potentially more money to, to, to build this as best we can.
Mr. Mayor, so just because you've changed the format and staff talks to us at the beginning of the meeting, then we could find out about those grants through that informal process well ahead of time? If they could, if you could make sure that that's one of the things they tell us about. And then if we have to vote at some point, we'll know.
Yeah. And the, the big risk to what I'm, I'm suggesting reverting is that if for some reason we got a grant and the council didn't want to accept it, that would be pretty embarrassing to the people who gave us the grant. So I think with coordination with finance and the mayor, there's a better opportunity to allow us to be, to react more quickly to grant opportunities out there. So anyways, is there any, any other questions for council, for Maeve and the team?
I have, I have one question for Maeve and for the team. With the skate park expansion happening this summer, with the building being built, one question I, I think the public might have is what, what is the, do we have a final like parking arrangement? Given the space that we will have at the end of the summer as far as in this gateway plaza in front of the, the awning? Will, will there, will there be new curbs installed, parking lanes installed? Is that all part of this project or do we need to look for funding for parking lot improvements to the existing parking lot? I know there's a, a vision for an expanded parking lot in the future. That's not part of this. But what, do we have a plan for how the parking lot will look when this is all done?
We do. It's part of the building to especially around this front area and then any area that's damaged or where they're putting in the utilities will be re, repaved. There, the skate park is going to expand to the north. Kind of, you can see the footprint here. It's essentially what this little box is. It looks like an L on the diagram. And then the tennis court area will have a plaza and a, a landscape buffer there as well. So as far as staging goes, right now the steel is essentially all in this area. The steel is going to start to get erected here pretty soon and that will be erected in what, three days? Or about a week, let's just say a week. So once that's up, then they can move the fence. And then as the skate park company mobilize, Dave also, it's Dreamland. Dreamland has been part of our meetings as well. And so we're all coordinated on that. There's still continuing coordination. Dreamland is at sixty percent construction drawing set. So these, these folks are at a hundred percent. So they're catching up their set right now and then they're planning to build as soon as they can. And that will be in that area. And then the playground will be the next one to come on board. I'm hoping to get the demo set out pretty soon. And that will mean that we're going to, we're going to take out the old bathroom. And the old bathroom is off to the west here. I think it's in the zone somewhere. So that would free up room for this crew, for Gino to move to the north a little bit and readjust. And then while that's happening, and once that's complete, then we'll have to shift them out of the way to build the playground. So it's a little bit of a puzzle piece. And Isaiah and I will be working closely as this continues. As far as the parking lot goes, it's in pretty decent shape. It will be left in better shape than it is right now. But keep in mind with the playground expansion, you will be losing parking spaces along there. And we do need to find funding for the expansion as well as for the fields, because we can't expand the, the parking lot without improving the fields. And the, the fields all need to have drainage improvements, significant drainage. That's where the historical dump site was and that's why you have all the parking and the uneven surfacing. So the drainage is substantial. We have a cost estimate of six million to do both the parking lot, move the maintenance building and renovate all the fields. That's a big price tag. So that's the next big target in the long range.
Uh, one or, one or two other questions, actually. I, I noticed the, and I'm wondering if this has been settled on the three to one ratio of pickleball to tennis courts? Is that?
A great question. So what we have in our drawing set right now, the final design is we have, when you walk into the court on the south end, there'll be two pickleball courts to every, to one tennis.
Okay.
Court for the first two courts. And then the back of the room would be four, four pickleball to one tennis court. And so there'd be two of those.
What, what have you communicated with the pickleball community about this arrangement or the tennis community? Is this a?
Part of this meeting that was held in December. Very Dunn Consultants and they were, they were all invited, all the, I guess you'd say the leaders or the organizers of the various organizations. Since then, I have heard from tennis, as well as from the United States Tennis Association, that there is a preference to have a two to one ratio throughout the whole building. But we as a community need to decide before we actually paint and purchase the paint if we want to do that, because that would then mean we're not serving as many pickleball players and we're also going to realize a reduction in user fees. So we need to get really clear about if that's the decision we want to make, because it would then mean the costs need to maybe go up for, if there's a reduction. So we have to study this some more and then once we have it all figured out, we're going to have another meeting. I'm tentatively working towards a meeting around March 12th. And we're working with some local advocates in town who are very interested in seeing this done once and finalized. So I will say for now, we, this is what we're going with, but we are going to have a public meeting. Everyone will be invited and we'll hash this out and, and work through this and then we'll, we'll pick the exact alignment.
Great. And one final question, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor. What is the status of the two bronze statues that were donated? Are we going to see those installed when this building opens later this year?
Great question. I just talked to the donors today. The Cougar and Cub were just completed. They can be, the Cougar and Cub can be shipped anytime. And then now they're, the, the bear is in the molding process. So they're at the foundry and the way that works is Gino is only contracted or their team's only contracted to put in the bases. And then it basically will get turned over to, for construction of the installation. However, with the playground, at the time that we were designing the building, we didn't know we were going to get the playground funding. And the playground design is lending itself to this really unique nature scape themed playground. And so there's a whole gateway and the designers are being designers at the moment and they have some good ideas for that. So I anticipate that I'm, I'm probably going to install those in the fall when I install the playground. You know, that'll probably all go together.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Maeve, we'll take some questions from the public in a second, but I just want to read it. All right. Thanks for all your tremendous work. And team, thanks for bearing with us on this and excited to see you proceed.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item?
One moment, Mr. Mayor. Uh, no one has indicated an interest in commenting on the side of Mr. Mayor.
I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution for change order number three and second amendment to the CMGC service agreement with Gino Construction Company for Travis Park renovation, phase one, city agreement number twenty-three, fifty-three, zero, zero, dash, five.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dick, second by Rule, I believe. Sorry, I might've missed someone there.
Welker.
Welker, sorry. Welker, sorry. Uh, Rule, uh, this will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Schreiber?
Uh, yes.
Counselor Ducat?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. For the next item under new business, city staff recommends an upgrade to the BSNA cloud platform, BSNA. BSNA is the software the city implemented in two thousand and nineteen, which replaced our fi, our prior financial software and provided an enterprise resource planning or ERP system for the city, connecting our financial software with building and per, planning and permitting work, uh, work orders, business, business licensing, payroll, human resources, and our content management program, resulting in greater efficiency, integration and process autonomization. Among other benefits, this cloud upgrade will, uh, offer increased data, data security and improve tools to communicate and serve the community. Uh, the staff report and BSA proposal are posted in the meeting packet, provide a bit more information. Um, we're happy to answer any questions from the council. And we do have staff that can give you an overview if there are questions. Uh, I can tell you, uh, I, I visit with our IT personally and, um, uh, they've shown me some of the vulnerabilities of our current software program. Uh, this is really the, one of the two engines of, uh, the backend of the city between Laserfish and this software. It literally ties everything that anyone does to the city together. So I, I would encourage your approval, but, um, there's questions for staff, we can answer those. If not, we could move on. Any members of the public wish to comment on this matter?
No, Mr. Mayor.
I'd entertain a motion to approve the resolution, accepting the proposal for BSNA cloud upgrade for the city's ERP software and service and authorized signatures and expenditures necessary for the project. This will be a roll call vote.
So moved.
Second.
So, uh, moved by Dick, second by Espiro.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Ducat?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you, council members. Uh, for the next item, I'd like to announce the reactivation of several of the city's volunteer citizen advisory committees to include the Parks and Recreation Commission, the Pedestrian and Bicycle Advisory Committee, the S, the Sustainability Committee, and the ADA Advisory Committee. Those interested in serving may apply by completing our online form at www.sanpointidaho.gov. If you check in the news and announcements section on the homepage, you will see a handy link there to click and apply. In the near future, we'll be seeking, also be seeking applicants for the new Urban Forestry Commission. I hope to make that announcement very soon. You know, council members and the public, I, I, I'm really excited to reactivate these committees. Um, a number of the policies and commission bylaws and related nuances do need some, um, improvements uh, to bring up to modern, modern standards, so to speak. We have, um, Heather, uh, who is working currently with the, um, uh, arts and, uh, culture and, excuse me, arts, culture, uh, historic, historic commission. Um, and she is just a, uh, ball of fire and is, is, uh, all over this. She's, she's organizing, she's gonna set up, you know, procedures for each committee, she's going to onboard them. I, I can't tell you how I'm oppressed, uh, with the energy she's put into this, but more than anything, I think these committees are going to provide uh, a sort of a two-way flow of information. I think they're gonna improve, uh, city council decision-making, because we'll be able to hear from these committees. We can actually lean on them to do some work when we have tricky challenges and issues to address. And I think that these committee members will also disseminate to their friends and family and colleagues, um, what's happening in the city. So I'm, I'm really excited to, to get these up and running. I, I know they're all volunteers, so I thank in advance anyone who does, um, submit their name, and, um, looking forward to, um, you know, just getting these moving to, to help us out in all these areas, so. Does council have any questions related to committees? Uh, by the way, you, you'll all at some point be asked to, um, contribute, uh, additional time as a liaison. I think the old council members know that, and I know Pam and Kyle know that, so, um, thanks in advance for that, too. But any questions?
Mr. Mayor, um, I would like to, I guess, make a comment or make a request that, um, as we move forward with the committees and they form, that, um, there's, if we're changing some of those bylaws and making them more modern, as you said, that, um, we have a more efficient way of these committees coming in front of council and giving updates in a timely manner after their meetings. I know that that historically was problematic, as was, um, taking notes within the meetings and stuff like that, and hopefully, um, staff members can be present to, um, support the committees and not rely on, um, individuals that are doing, providing their volunteer time, because they might not have the proper skills to, to do that. Um, or another suggestion would be that, um, the meetings maybe are held in council chambers and they can be recorded for the public, so that then you wouldn't have to take minutes, you could go back and see what happened in the meetings. Um, so those are just some things that, um, I would request, um, looking forward to getting, um, better input from the committees. And also, um, uh, maybe putting tasks to what they're doing. I think that sometimes there were not specific direction for the committees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, uh, absolutely, Councilwoman Rule, and, um, Heather and I have already been discussing, Heather Upton, uh, about this, and she is, um, very organized. And she's even producing procedures, like how do they react to, if they have issue A, what is the procedure for them to bring it to the committee, move it through the committee, and bring it to, you know, resolution and bring it to council? So she's thinking of this, um, very strategically, and to make sure there's consistency across the committees and, and to give really a, a, a very clear procedure, training manual and policy manual for each committee. So, um, uh, happy to share those out to the council and get your feedback as they get developed in the coming weeks and months, but, um, uh, yes, I think historically, one of the challenges with the committees also is, um, you know, we want their feedback, we want their input, we want their advice, um, and how to really get that out, uh, as you said, efficiently, timely, um, and consistently, so, yeah, looking forward to it.
Mr. Mayor, um, I didn't go back and read the bylaws for, well, I did read a significant amount of the bylaws for the different committees, but I would also request that, as we're remaking them, that we, um, would only have, um, one member at large, and the majority of the committees would actually be city residents.
I like that.
I think that's important, because this, as a council, that's what we're deciding on, what happens within the city limits, and I think the city residents need to be prioritized, because that does not always happen, um, within our greater region, shall we say.
Residents first.
Yeah.
Uh, I agree wholeheartedly. There are only a few exceptions where that's a little difficult. Some of the committees, such as the, the tree, um, Urban Forestry Commission, does require specific skill sets, because they're making cer, decisions on like hazard trees, but absolutely, I'm a hundred percent behind that.
And also in sustainability, also had, you had recommended some experience or?
So that's, that's our current policy, so some of our code might be coming back to you for changes in your thoughts and, um, adoption of that, but, yeah, we're gonna build it better and, um, activate it and, um, get people, uh, engaged, so looking forward to it. Great. Any other questions in the council and the committees? There's no action item here. Any members of the public wish to speak, uh, or comment on this item?
Mr. Mayor, did have one more comment.
Uh, Councilwoman Rule.
Um, I did have a member of the public who had been on our historic commissions and, um, was asking about, you know, are there term limits and different things like that? Um, they've not been on the commission now for a while, but are interested in being on a commission again, so, um, just, and they also voiced concern about, um, arts and historic being put together, so I don't know if there's any discussions with Heather that are going on about the pros and cons of why we combined or what those are, so, um, if I can get some more information when that's available and get back to that resident, that would be helpful.
Um, absolutely, and again, as, what I envision is what you see on the screen here, all of these, uh, these four plus the, uh, Urban Forestry Commission, these are gonna have to be tweaked and revised a little bit, so it'll probably be a, a solid hour or two or hour, council, just going through those changes and incorporating your, your desires and feedback.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, I think this is great. I think it's the right time to, to, uh, reinstate these commissions. We've, in the last several years, adopted or updated, um, a Parks and Recreation Master Plan, a multimodal transportation master plan, which includes bicycle and pedestrian priority networks. And we have an arts and culture historic preservation master plan, and we have a, an urban forestry master plan. It's, it's just perfect, and I think every new member of one of these commissions should be given that document, maybe even in a bound print form, and say, familiarize yourself with it. This is, this is what we want you to become the community experts on, so you can advise us on how we should prioritize implementation of these plans. Because they're, they're all good plans, but right now, they're just on our website, and, you know, we don't have a, a focused community group tasked with looking closely at those plans and saying, and holding us accountable as a council to make sure that we're making decisions in, in the, in support of those master plans.
You're here.
Yeah, so that's, uh, and if, if any, another thing I'd say is if, if they identify things in those master plans that they think need to be amended, because they don't align with, align with our comprehensive plan, bring suggested amendments to those,
Yeah.
those, uh, master plans.
Yeah, I love it.
Yeah. So, and I'm excited to serve on at least, well, probably just one of these committees, not.
I'm gonna put, uh, your names, names in a hat and draw a line, but.
Yeah.
Any other council comments?
Excited also.
Any members of the public who wish to comment on this? They already asked that, I'm sorry. A long day.
Mr. Mayor, no, but, um, just a quick note from the city clerk. Um, the, uh, application is available if you go to the committee and commissions, uh, page on the city website, it is now there. Um, we will have a, a handy news announcement, uh, posted tomorrow, it's a little easier for folks to find on the homepage for that, so. Um, look for that tomorrow, otherwise, if you can navigate your way to that application, it is there under committees and commissions.
Excellent. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and, uh, just for the public, um, it will be a couple of weeks before we start, um, you know, organizing applicants and, uh, looking at the bill sets and, uh, traits needed to fill out these committees, so bear with us, but certainly encourage, uh, you to tell your friends, family. Uh, we don't have, I'm not sure we have age restrictions, so maybe we'll get some youth involved in this, too, so, uh, looking forward to it.
Mr. Mayor, it actually says in some of those that we want a high school member.
Oh, nice.
Uh, in the, yeah.
Task my, my children, or friends' children, children's friends. Um, moving on, um, item number eighty, uh, the final item on the agenda was added by Councilman Espiro, who seeks discussion on the appointment of an interim city administrator. I will now yield the floor to Joel.
Awesome, and I'm gonna yield the floor to Council President Welker.
All right, sure. Um, yeah, this, this, this I put on the agenda, we put on the agenda, uh, well, I think around six, six weeks ago now, so a lot, a lot has happened, and one of the things that's happened is, uh, Mayor Grimm has worked, as we all know, fifty-hour weeks or more, and I've heard, um, a lot from the, uh, city hall that he's, he's doing a great job, so I, I do want to thank you, Mr. Grimm, for all that, or Mayor Grimm, for all that you've committed towards the city over the last month and a half. Um, that said, I don't think a lot of the public is aware that we do have ordinance and state law that has the city administrator position currently as identified as what's called an appointive position, along with, uh, city clerk, city treasurer, police chief, fire chief, and attorney. So according to State Code Fifty-two oh four, it is the, um, the duty of the mayor to appoint, appointive uh, officers when those positions become vacant, so, um, with your, you're still working at the part-time mayor salary, so I, I do just want to start the conversation, and I appreciate the, um, proposed org chart you included in the council packet tonight, which the, is available for the public to see. And I just wanted to open the conversation about the future of the appointive positions at the city. Do, do we want to talk about changing those? Or, or do you plan to appoint a city administrator sometime in the near future to take some of this enormous workload off of your plate? So that's kind of the top, the purpose for this being on the agenda tonight, um, to, to address the, the vacancy that we have as, uh, an appointive officer and, and see what your intentions might be for, um, addressing that.
Mr. Mayor, before you start, could I request that the org chart that was attached to the packet be put up, please?
Yes, I'll make that happen promptly.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Um, as Councilman Welker said, to give you an opportunity, as, you know, well aware, wasn't a secret of your desire to change some things, it's also an opportunity to, to hear what you desire.
Well, council members, I really appreciate the opportunity to discuss this with, uh, you and the public. Um, the first, um, five weeks have been, um, enlightening. Um, you know, I, I guess the way I've described it some, is I've now looked under the engine or looked under the hood. I've seen the engine. Um, I see the leaky oil, I see the old fan belts. Um, I see, you know, in the, in the cockpit, the, the controls, and then I see the budget. Um, and it's frankly, like squeezing blood out of a rock, um, to try to, um, fix everything I see, and, um, first and foremost, um, uh, we're scheduling a, we're trying to schedule a workshop for the council training and to go over the strategic priorities of the city, uh, sometime after the twenty-first. And Cassidy's gonna be working with you and Fonda, our attorneys, uh, to schedule that. And, um, I guess I'd say, first and foremost, I'll be the first person to, um, you know, raise my hand and, and cry uncle when, um, what's before you, this org chart, uh, uh, comes to fruition, um, and if it's not working, but what I'd, I would ask your grace, um, for the, the first few months is, um, if you could, uh, give me that, that time, probably four months, to try to fill out these, these, uh, vacant, uh, director positions. Right now, we have the Public Works Director, um, application out, got the Community Development, uh, Director, Planning and Development Director position out. And, um, we haven't yet done City Attorney slash Central Service Director, had some great talks with Fonda and Zach about, uh, how their role might play into that. But this is sort of my, my vision, my framework, and, um, I know it's a little different than how the city's been operating for the last, um, uh, seven or eight years. Um, this is how many small communities work with department heads. Um, I'm currently um, responding to, I believe, somewhere between fifteen and seventeen direct reports. And that is, uh, what the cit, former city administrator was responding to, and I can tell you it's a lot. This goal is to get that down to seven direct reports, these directors. And, uh, under this vision, um, the mayor, as a part-time mayor, would simply be, uh, having these director meetings, these staff meetings, and saying, what, what do you need help with? What do you, what can the mayor do for you? What are you having trouble with this week? With the staff reports, I've been trying to show you that we have an amazing staff of super qualified people here who I, I know, given the opportunity to lead and, and, and manage departments and manage their work, they can flourish, grow, and provide incredible service to the community and the city. So, um, under this org chart, you'll see that yellow, I don't even know what shape that is, but it's a public information department facilitator. And my vision for that is if after four months and I get these department heads stood up, if, um, with consultation discussion with the council, if there's a desire for an overarching sort of facilitator, manager, to help these qualified department heads, that that, that position could, could come in. I've heard concerns about, well, you know, Jeremy, maybe you have the time or expertise to, to dedicate fifty hours a week to the city. What if the next mayor doesn't, you know, are we in a position where we lack that, that overarching sort of, um, you know, guidance? So that PIO, Department Facilitator, I think could be a really neat position. I envision them, um, having touchpoints with every department head, probably being the most intimate, concerned and knowledgeable about the city, and also helping and facilitating the needs of those department heads. The reason I like that public information officer is because, um, we get a lot of requests. You know, people have questions about projects, process, procedures. Uh, not only could that person be a frontline, uh, intake and, uh, person boots on the ground to respond to a community group or an individual, oh, you need information about a new sports center, this is where we find it. These are your questions you had. Obviously interfacing with the press, uh, incidents, but overall, just if needed, um, acting as an overarching, um, support system for those department heads. So, um.
And, and Mr. Mayor, I would, I would point out that actually that is one of the roles of the previous city administrator was Principal Information Officer. principal information officer, kind of the touch point for members of the public, or even for city council members who had questions about specific projects going on within departments. So in a way, you're you're rolling that over into a a new position as well.
Yeah, and I I I I'm totally respectful of the council. Um, I I I I to some degree, I work for you. Um, and um, you know, I want this to work. And I guess what I'm asking is, I'd I'd really like a few months to to try to set this up. Um, it doesn't prohibit or um conflict with possibly filling a city administrator role. Um, but as you all know, when I ran on a platform that would seem to be well-supported by the public to uh look at our organization and how that works, and is is that position right for a town of this size? Um, but I guess in conclusion, I'd say, even if we do end up there again, I wouldn't want that person to have to come in and then be in the situation I'm in right now, trying to hire a bunch of department heads, because they're gonna have seventeen direct reports. So I'd really love to stand up uh these department heads um with some great qualified people. And then uh if we do call it in June or July, get to a position where we wanna, where I will brief you, and we can have a a work session or whatever about it. Um, at least if that person were to come on, they're gonna have a full team uh to to go to bat and and play play with. So that's sort of where how I see it right now. Um, I appreciate your your grace and time, and um I'm not gonna instruct you um if that's the vote of the council, but uh I would ask for a few months to to try to organize this in a more traditional way that I've worked under and many small towns function well under.
So um state law actually only requires three appointive officers at the state or the at at the municipal level. That's the the clerk, the treasurer, and the attorney.
Yeah.
Um, we have six here. So the we have six identified in city code. So our city code would has expanded on the three positions. Obviously, we need a police chief. We're not suggesting that we don't need a police chief. We also need a fire chief. So is your uh long-term vision to amend code to replace the city administrator with some new appointed positions with any of these department head positions besides this? Well, actually, three of them would be appointed, wouldn't they? The Finance Director, the City Attorney, the Police Chief, or any of the other department head and the clerk, or any of the other uh department head positions in your org chart envisioned to be appointive. And just to clarify for the public, the difference between uh non-appointed position and appointed position is that an appointed position is uh nominated um appointed by the mayor and approved with a majority of consent of council. It can't be fired without a majority of consent of council. The purpose, of course, is to protect the institution across administrations so that a new mayor can't come in and completely clean house, fire all the department heads and build from scratch. That's the intent behind appointive positions. Fire the police chief and hire their best friend to be the chief law enforcement officer in town. Um, it's to protect the institution across administrative terms. So do you envision any other department head positions besides the four um that are appointed right now to be appointed positions?
Yeah, great, great question, Councilman Welker. Um, I I would add on to that the other benefit of appointed uh positions. Uh, I like to describe it when you go to see your doctor, you want your doctor to be able to tell you the truth. You 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 don't exercise enough, eat too many donuts, you smoke too much, whatever. Um, appointed positions are like that as well. You want your, and I worked as an appointed planning director, planning community development director at the city standpoint. You want your appointed, these blue, blue dots, blue boxes here to have that freedom to speak truth to power, so to speak, to speak uh their professional opinions without that threat of being fired or removed. Um, so uh pre-two thousand fifteen Planning and Community Development Director was an appointed position. And my, to answer your question, my intent would be to make all of these top four, um one, two, three, four, five, six, seven uh positions, appointed positions, that would require a change in code. Um, if they're already billed, there've been historical processes where the council makes an interim director and appointed director, but I think it's it's best for the public and best for the operation of government to have those seven top boxes uh as appointed positions. And uh as for the yellow um box, uh um that that would be um uh I think up to the council as we discuss this as as things proceed.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah.
I have comment too. Go. Um, quick comment, Mister Mayor, if I may.
Councilwoman Rule.
Um, so the the yellow box, um the title for me, Public Information Officer, you know, in in my little world, um I see that as being the mayor's job. Um, you should be the interface. You were elected to provide the public with what they want. And yes, there might be a workload and such that there would need to be some assistance there, but um I think that a a a good mayor is the person who's really that interface. I mean, maybe you're not telling them how to, you know, put in a building permit or whatever that is, what you're scoping is much bigger, and you're the face and you're the PR person for the city. So I just wanted to put that out there. Um, having somebody in assistive type of position or um that you can refer individuals to when they need help with, you know, building permits or there's utility though, makes sense to me, but just putting that out there.
Appreciate that, Councilwoman Rule. And um, you know, I I I think it's an interesting, we'll see. I I'd like to see where we're at in a few months. And um, you know, I don't think that position's critical. Um, you know, I think another option the city has is to go to a um not a part-time, a full-time mayor, you know, pay um, somebody suggested in the community median median community wage. Um, but no, I I think that position, I I put it there to to at least provide a rebuttal to um a potential concern that i- in the absence of a mayor who's not fully committed, um or a mayor who may only be here a couple of days a month, um that there's someone guiding there. I can't ensure that I'm gonna be mayor for the rest of my life or forever here, of course. So that was sort of that that thought is that person is the the cohesion and support for our department heads. Um, but uh again, I I'd love to come back to you all and uh maybe July and see where we're at. And um hopefully, um a lot of hard work, this and some good, good hires. This is gonna be something that you'll you'll give some consideration to.
If if I may respond just to that, that thought that you just pointed out, I think, you know, going back to the commissions actually, and and the various master plans that we have at the city, you could drop any of those master plans underneath the auspices of and of specific departments as well. You know, we've got the 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 wastewater um and and stormwater management plans would be under Public Works. The multimodal transportation plan would kind of be in between Public Works and maybe Community Planning Development, obviously Parks and Recreation. So my point is, a- as we hire and fill these director-level positions, we are gonna have um and I shouldn't say we are, we 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 risk having uh appointive leaders at the city who are focused on advancing specific components of or specific projects within the realm of their their little sphere of influence. So another argument for a facilitator, um somebody who who works across departments is that that runs the risk of us um competing for resources at the city. And of course, ideally, we would we'd have a very collaborative environment where department heads do work together. And of course, we have weekly leadership team meetings chaired by the mayor. Um, but there have been instances in the past where there has been competition with uh between departments. So another argument for somebody to work across departments is that we we have a we have a strategic plan at the city, what what we do with that strategic plan and how we choose to advance that. But the strategic plan is specifically written to uh advance advance our various community master plans forward in a way that um serves the needs of the community best and 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 supports the overall vision of the comprehensive plan. So uh the four years is a very short time. And as you pointed out earlier tonight, we've only had one or two mayors in a hundred and twenty years of sample in history have served more than four years. But we have a twenty-year comprehensive plan. So having an appointive, you know, administrator, if we don't call it administrator, um that's fine too. But having an appoint of somebody who's who's um at at the same level as directors, but their charter is not to advance the multimodal transportation plan or the Parks and Rec Master Plan or the, you know, the whatever it is, stormwater management plan, but to advance the strategic plan and and make sure that we're fulfilling the vision of the comprehensive plan. That that's kind of the the argument that I wanted to put forward um for an appointive position that is not specifically public work, specifically finance, specifically um infrastructure. So that that's just a conversation I hope we can have as we think about, you know, the 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 long run, the twenty-year um future of Sandpoint. So, yeah, I guess just pointing out that I that concept as well.
Yeah.
Possibly a need for for somebody who works across departments and holds as their charter, not one or two of the ma- of the master plans that we have, but the whole comprehensive plan and the city strategic, the five-year strategic plan to make sure we're moving towards that twenty-year vision.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Councilman uh President Welker. Um, I think it's, I think it's uh a a good thing to think about. Um, I worked um under this sort of framework. Um, I know I've heard stories about siloing and competition. Um, what I didn't show on on this, because I couldn't draw it cleanly, but there's these circles that overlap, these green, green bars, where there is collaboration between departments, obviously between engineering and and some building and grounds and things to that effect. So um you know, I I guess I see the council to some degree as that that throttle, that gatekeeper. Um, uh uh imagine, you know, these department reports at the beginning of the meeting where the council's really engaging with these department heads and saying, well, you know, hit the brakes there or speed up there or, you know. Um, I think the the one place where it would really come um into focus is probably in the budget. That's where I honestly saw it when I worked under this sort of format. And um th- there were times, uh Corey may remember, um when there were, you know, budget hearings and the Finance Director would say, we gotta cut, you know, in oh eight, oh nine, we gotta cut three hundred, four hundred grand out of general, general fund. What are we gonna do? And often it was very collaborative and, you know, people really digging deep saying, you know, I can give up a full-time employee, I guess. And boy, you really need that. I found it amazingly collaborative, but I can see how by human nature it could be also um very competitive. Um, but at that that process, the main difference here is during the budget session, um those department heads used to spend thirty minutes with the council. Deb, you may have been on the council then, I forget. But they would present their budgets, and the council actually got to ask hard questions, say, do you need a um uh an extra employee, uh park strike? Did you really need that that tractor? Because the police chief says he needs um another patrol car. So it was a, it was a, I think, a very hands-on way for the council to really um govern the city and manage um priorities. But I do hear you and super open to talking about it in a few months, if you'd give me some time to uh to work through this. Um, Councilwoman, just just say um Ma- Mister Mayor.
Mister Mayor.
Councilwoman Duquette.
Thank you. Um, since the discussion was whether or not you should appoint an interim city administrator, um, I just wanted to support you in having that choice. Um, and I have several reasons. And fifty-two oh four, like you said, doesn't state an administrator. And in the code, the city code, you have that listed. It is listed. But the next one, one-six-two, says each and every appointive officer of the city um of this chapter shall serve at the discretion and pleasure of the mayor and city council. To me, that gives the mayor the choice, since I thought that's what the discussion was about. Um, you talk about amending the city code. We didn't amend it when we put the citizen committees on hold. So.
Those are not in state law as well.
That's in the, that's in the code. And and so I heard you mention that you would have to amend the city code to take that administrator out. We didn't amend it.
And and council, council members, um you're gonna think I'm just I don't know what you're gonna think, but in light of um just trying to keep an orderly meeting, as we've seen in our region recently, so that sort of, no, no, that you're fine, Councilwoman Duquette. Um, just, uh, I wanna try to avoid the debate. So if you have a statement um or a comment, and then if you want, I hope you can appreciate that just.
For sure.
And I do, it's just, okay. They brought that, it was their um motion.
Correct, correct.
So that's why I was directing there, because it seems to me that's what brought it about, is all. Um, a- and I know the voters, to be accountable to the voters, you did campaign on not having that position. And you were elected. And I think that was a big part of it. Um, and I'm just pointing out things that does say is you says you do have the right. Um, in the AIC, the Association of Idaho Cities, says them the mayor should be the hiring and firing of employees. Um, in our personnel file, uh dated two thousand nineteen, the city personnel policy, it says the mayor or his or her designee may appoint personnel to help carry out. To me, it just seems like it's your choice.
Councilwoman uh Duquette, I really appreciate your support. A wise governor of Wyoming once told me, um, don't jump in front of the train when it's going your direction. I'm getting the sense that I I have some grace and uh that my council members on the right here are open to what I've thrown out. But uh if I'm wrong, um, I would uh encourage a robust defense. But I I feel like um by body language, um, people are generally okay. But I do wanna uh open it up for other council member comments.
Yeah, Mister Mayor, I, not to debate, um although it's fine if we if we do. Um, I don't fully understand what, I think I understand what Councilwoman Duquette's saying, but to be clear, uh, you would agree you can't just fire whoever you want whenever you want.
Um, you know, I I defer Councilman Espiro.
It's an appointed position.
Correct. No, so it's pretty clear. Um, an appointed position, uh I would yeah, I would appoint, council has to confirm. Sometimes the council might not like an appointed appointee. I would have to then go back and find someone else. Um, in terms of uh dismissal or firing an appointed position, there's two processes that can take place. One, by my initiative, with two-thirds of the council supporting it. Uh, the other is with the council's full hundred percent um uh approval without the mayor's consent. So there's.
Yeah, and these are, the only reason I'm asking these questions, Mister Mayor, is to be clear as we can here now. So when the papers print, it's clear, it's not this, Councilman Espiro, just can't wait to get a new administrator in, what have you, or Councilman Welker hates city administrators. So I just wanna be very clear about this as we move forward. Yes, your campaign was X, Y, Z. Your campaign could have been, we want, I'm gonna fire Chief Kuhn. Regardless of what your campaign was, you can't do that. And I just want the public to know what you can and cannot do. So the discussion here is some of us may not feel comfortable moving right away to removing an appointed position, which would you agree is up to us as a council?
Absolutely. Uh, well, you a hundred percent, and even adding uh a new appointed position.
Right, absolutely.
Or removing the city administrator as appointed position.
Which there is a, as I understand, law, city code, not a lawyer, we have those here, thankfully. There is this working together of, we can say, hey, we would like one within ten days, as I understand code, and you bring one to us.
You know, the the timing and specifics of that, I think, get a little more complicated. Um, uh, you know, we can discuss them now, but you know, I mean, imagine trying to, that ten-day thing, hire. I mean, we've, we've been out the Public Works position out for two weeks. We we do have a couple of great candidates, but imagine trying to find a qualified person and appoint them.
Mister Mayor, and I asked that question just to show you that we understand that that can be difficult. And we wanna be reasonable. So what I'm saying is, what I what I hear you asking is, you're not sitting here, again, this is for the public, for the newspapers. You're not sitting here asking us to X the position, but to give you an opportunity to organize and create something that can be beneficial to all to see if we do need this position, or if we um evolve this position into something else.
Absolutely. And uh I I I believe most of my campaign rhetoric was um assess and reevaluate. Um, and also, I'll just point out historically, um when I interviewed for an appointed position as the Planning Director in two thousand and seven, it's a collaborative process of the mayor and a council member on that interview, because uh obviously I don't wanna bring an appointment um that you may not be supportive of. So um it's it's collaborative. Um, I I'm here to work with you to make this community the best we can make it, so.
Yeah, and and Mister Mayor, I trust that you can understand and appreciate, you know, for some of us who have been here four years, uh six years, seven years, dead longer, there there, there is this nice cohesiveness that an administrator position, position brought, where maybe the mayor at the time or the mayor previously wasn't as invested as you. Wasn't as invested as you are now or are going to be, and that can be scary for a community. So yes, in a perfect world, maybe not have a city administrator, but it is a part time position for council and mayor. And there's trade offs for a full time position, council and mayor, I believe that's where you start getting more corrupt. Politicians where maybe you're not as honest, you as in the position, so. I just wanna voice my opinion that I think that we can move forward, trying to. Show grace or whatever you wanna describe it, but to to move forward, not to get rid of the position, but to see what we can. Create as a council, as a mayor, as staff, to see what works best for the community.
Thank you, Councilman Spiro, I'm a hundred percent committed to work with the full council on putting together an organization that. Meets your needs, meets the council's needs, meets our community needs, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman, do it, one of the other things I'm trying to do is make sure everyone gets to say something before someone says something a second time. Any other?
No, I'm just since Joel had commented what I was saying, I just wanted to make it clear. That I was not saying that you rule the roost, the council does balance. But what I was saying was that, to me, I think you deserve the right to choose at this point. How you want to approach your position. I wasn't saying that he's gonna fire anybody, or I was just reading from the. Code and the AIC's policy manual, so I don't, I won't, anybody took it the wrong idea. I was just saying, that's my opinion, if we're discussing your ability to do that, you have that ability. And then we have the ability to back it or not.
Thank you.
Seemed to me like it was being taken.
Wrong way.
Differently.
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman Duquette, and I'm sure that at our training, and I know. Some of the existing council members have been through the training, but I'm sure Lake City Law, Fonda and Zach will. Will give us perfect clarity on what all those roles are, but I can assure you that I'm I'm here to work with all of you. As I said before, we may not always agree, but I'm 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 a bridge builder and. We can accomplish more together than we can being frustrated by each other, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Rule.
So just looking at the chart, I do have a couple of concerns. You say that you have put out for higher different positions and you're hoping that we can change codes to get those appointed. But I would be concerned for the individuals applying if we don't know how this is all gonna pan out, that. What they're being hired for doesn't end up what they were being hired for, so I would throw some caution out there. And then when I look at the chart for some of these positions. There's a pretty heavy workload, it looks like there's a big, long. Set of green squares for the public works director, and is that going to be far too much work for one individual to. Manage all of those pieces of our puzzle, so I would like to see. A little bit more information about that and other options potentially of how that could work. So that we don't get somebody in here who has to work seventy hours a week just to keep up with what their workload is. So I'm looking forward to a little bit more. Detail and in what your plan is.
Yeah, Councilwoman Rule, so some of those under Public Works Director. For instance, engineering services, we have Brandon right now is engineer, he manages people, he takes on. Lots of management roles, so many of these have actual managers under the Public Works Director. For example, water treatment has a water treatment supervisor is managing the water treatment plant and that staff, same with wastewater. You heard from Rod tonight, utility distribution collection, stormwater, streets, we have chat, fleet. Be honest, I'm not sure all, but who's managing fleet right now, I'm sure I am, but. Fiber, we don't really have anyone there, but it's pretty much contracted repairs. And solid waste is a contract with waste management primarily, so. This is pretty much what the former Public Works Director Cody Van Dyke was managing, not a whole lot of additions. And, you know, I think with the right, right individual, this can work really well, especially if they're a good manager. And to note your comment about those hires, that's that's a great point. I will be cautious as I engage with these applicants about what position is, if it's appointed or hired at this point.
Okay, and then I guess my comment would be that. I realize Cody did that, I was here when Cody did that, but. Sandpoint isn't the same sandpoint that it was eight or ten years ago, so we've had a lot of growth and a lot of change happen, and so those job responsibilities may be. Much more than they were ten years ago.
Right, right.
So please take that into account as you go through this charting and such.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rule, any other council comments on this item at this point? Uh, any members of the public who wish to comment on this matter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, one moment. Amelia Boyd.
Good evening, Ms. Boyd.
Good evening. Amelia Boyd, I live in the city. I looked up as you were talking about this and having this discussion. What the responsibilities of a city manager as opposed to a city administrator, so maybe something you wanna take into consideration. The condensed version, a city administrator focuses on administration and policy creation. City managers, on the other hand, dedicate their efforts to implementing policies, so it seems to me that is what you're looking for. Seems to make sense that that would be a better fit, another consideration. Same concerns I had as Counselor Rule about the orc chart. Especially the Public Works, one individual, nine categories responsible for, so that's person would, in essence, get nine reports as opposed to. The PIO getting seven seems a little out of balance to me. And I also agree with Councilor Rule that the mayor is the city figurehead and should be the public information officer, that's why we voted. That's why you were voted in. Previous mayor was unavailable and out of sight, so I'm hoping that's not the case. That it's not pawned on somebody else. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Mayor, that is all who have signed up to speak on this matter.
I don't think there's an action item there, so. With no further business on the agenda, the meeting is now adjourned at. Seven forty eight P M, thank you, everyone.